Okay, call to order, this meeting of the Pickwa City Schools Board of Education for March 25th, 2021. Roll call, Mr. Hiddle.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here. If you will, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for coming. First order of business we need to do is approval of the minutes for the February 25th meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Opposed? Okay, measure passes. Now, I need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Measure carries.
Just before we get started with this presentation, I wanted to mention, obviously, Dwayne's not here tonight. His father is in the hospital and they've asked for the family to make sure they get a chance to come in and see him tonight. So, obviously, all of us are thinking about him and praying for he and his family tonight. So, wanted to mention that. That's why he's out tonight, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Okay, tonight, we have Ohio Auditor of State, Mr. Keith Faber has an award.
Thank you. Let me start out, this is a, this is a pretty remarkable day for us. First of all, I love being your state auditor. I represented part of this area for a while in the legislature. But as state auditor, what we do is, I always say, it's easier to say what we don't do. I don't audit individuals, don't audit businesses, and don't collect taxes. What I do is act as the watchdog for Ohio's citizens of people who spend tax dollars. And there are some 6,000 governmental entities across Ohio that we audit. We audit 4,800 of them a year. Some people get audited every other year, but schools like yours get audited every year. And our top award that we give out is one of the things I'm here to present tonight. And out of the 6,000 entities that we audit, less than 4% get the award that I'm going to present to your school district and your treasurer tonight. So this means you're not just the best of the best, you're one of the elite. And this isn't the first year we've been here to your superintendent. And the fact that you guys have figured out how to get this year after year is really impressive. And I say this all the time, that getting awards from us is not a, it's a team sport. It's not an individual activity. Because you can't possibly get our Auditor's Award with Distinction, which I'm going to present here tonight, without having an understanding about how important it is to have clean books and records, good controls, and frankly, an attitude across your institution about having transparency and accountability. And so I want to go ahead and do that and present this to Jeremy, your treasurer, and your school board president, if that's okay, sir?
Or do you want his staff?
Well, we'll recognize the staff. This is a second. This is, and again, I always jokingly say, if there's a time for a bonus, this is the time, Jeremy, that we usually recommend that, although you can't pay bonuses, they have to be contracted under Ohio law. But, but the, it would be an audit finding you wouldn't get this next year. But I do want to just commend how important this is. And so on behalf of my staff and the people of State of Ohio, congratulations on doing the job right and making sure we have a commitment here in the school district for transparency. Now, while I've got you up here, this is also a remarkable day, for another reason. We started, when I became your state auditor, to create the Stars Program. And that's a recognition of governmental entities that do a good job on transparency with regard to public records and open meetings. And so when I became auditor, we moved out of, and this is auditor gibberish, but we moved out of Schedule C, which is our third level of auditing, into, into the schedule where we audit this every year, auditing for transparency, public records, open meetings, the things you just went through, making sure that you're online, people have access to participate, all of those things that allow people to know that their government is accessible to them. And this is the first time since we've been giving these awards out that I've actually presented these two awards together. And so you are the first one that I've presented both our four-star award, which is our top award for transparency and open government, along with our Auditor's Award with Distinction. And so this is not just a small milestone, this is, this is, again, this is the inaugural top award. And so for transparency and open government, this is our top award. You've met all of our expectations. And in fact, in order to get the four stars, you had to exceed our expectations by going above and beyond what is required at law. And what this really says is that you allow citizens to have access to their information, you allow citizens to participate, and, and the fact that you're broadcasting your meetings to me is a plus. We worked with the legislature to open this up during COVID, to allow you to do things remotely. We encourage citizen participation, and we'll continue to monitor that. So congratulations, Jeremy Superintendent, I know you couldn't be here, so you probably should come up for this one as well, and certainly to the school board and the school board president. Because, again, without leadership, this is a, this is a team activity. Without leadership and a commitment from the board and the other elected officials, this doesn't happen. So thank you for doing that. Congratulations. Appreciate it. You might want to get all the board up here as well.
Yeah. Come on up.
Come on up. And if you guys didn't insist on this as board members, a lot of this stuff doesn't happen. And as fellow elected officials, thank you for holding that standard.
I'm bringing up my crew here.
And then get your staff in here. I want to introduce your staff here.
Sure.
Probably violently. Oh, the chair.
Karen, Karen Magato is here, and this is actually her final year with us. She's retiring at the end of 2021. And so it's good that we've been able to make that milestone happen while she was here.
We haven't agreed to that.
Yeah, I know, nobody wants that, but that's what, she's gonna...
Tell them, they can negotiate another.
Yeah. Non-negotiable. Non-negotiable. And then Amy Fashner also works in the budgetary, and Melvin Glazer is also an assistant treasurer, and she wasn't able to be here this evening. But I can't do it without the team. And I say it every time when this happens, we don't get these awards because of what we do in our office. It really goes to everybody out there, in the building levels, in the administrative levels, because that's where all the paperwork comes from, from the start, and they've got to do all that right to make it flush out up here, so. Thank you.
Say when we're good, Joe.
We're good.
Okay. One, one party comment, and you guys go back to your seats. I...
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thanks.
I also want to just commend the district for its commitment to educating kids. I live in a school district that went live in August and the beginning of the year, and I know you did as well. And that's a commitment to your staff. And so I want to do a shout-out to your teaching staff and all of your administrators, who made the commitment and realized just how important it is that kids be in the classroom. And I know that wasn't easy. I know there were a lot of risks and a lot of people had concerns. But unless I'm mistaken, I haven't heard of any problems that you guys had with that decision. I know we didn't have any real, real problems in our district. My kids are in eighth grade and they're sophomore. And I can just tell you, even that two or three months when they were remote, the quality of education just isn't the same as you're able to provide your kids. And not missing that quality of education is something that the districts who didn't go back, I think, are going to see. And so thank you for making that commitment to your staff and teachers. Thank you for willing to take on that extra burden and extra responsibility, because I know it had to be difficult. And so thank you on behalf of a parent for making that decision, and a parent who's not too far, I don't live that far away. So, thanks for all you do, and thanks for keeping the quality of education first and foremost. Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm getting thrown out there.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thanks, team.
Hey, congratulations, team.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good job. Thank you. Jeremy, congratulations. Good job.
Thanks.
Do a great job for us. We're very blessed to have the people we do, all of you. Thank you. Okay, well...
And my family.
Moving along now, back to board reports. Mr. Height, do you have anything?
Yeah, we've got a little bit. Career Center board met this past Monday. A couple of things I want to highlight, that we have four students on the software engineering team from Sydney and from their satellite program, and they are now ranked in the top 10 in the nation. And they've been invited to compete in the Business Professional Association's National Leadership Conference this year. So that's pretty slick for one of the satellite programs. And the Auditor of State also presented the same, very similar awards to the, the financial reporting team over at the Career Center. So we want to celebrate that as well. And also, the Career Center tomorrow is hosting the West Central Ohio Manufacturing Partnership Meeting, and this is an industry-led partnership with the Career Center. So we're pleased to be hosting that meeting tomorrow at the, over at the Career Center. And I will stop there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. Any questions or anything from anyone? Okay. Hearing of the public, I have nothing on that, so we'll move along. Okay, we are to Mr. Hiddle, your treasurer's agenda.
These are going to be pretty brief. If there's any questions about the financial reports. Again, we're running a little bit better than expected, which is the same thing that we found within the state of Ohio. They're running about $1.2 billion ahead, we're nowhere near. That kind of, that kind of craziness. But we are doing well, and everything seems to be on target for having another year in the black. So, are there any questions about the financial reports? The next thing that we have is the recommend board approval to do a fund-to-fund transfer. This fund-to-fund transfer is to help pay the debt that we issued to do the renovations at the high school. So, every year, we've got to make that payment, and so this is approving that, that transaction. Those are the only two things that I have on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Well, with that, if there's no questions or anything, I need a motion to, well, we need to take a vote. So, need a motion?
So move.
Okay, so move, a second by Sean. Okay. All in favor of the treasurer's agenda vote? Please say, Jeremy, we do roll call, correct? Because of financials?
We can do that since...
Okay, yes. So it does involve some money there.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Okay, superintendent's report, tonight, Mr., Mr. Tony Lyons will be reporting for us.
Our building spotlight tonight will be Washington primary, and we have Mrs. Pence with us tonight to share some things that are going on in Washington. Mrs. Pence?
I am going to start by modeling one of the things we teach our kids. I am safe. I am calm. I can handle it. Because what I'm going to talk about is part of our social emotional learning, which is so, so important, like he said, word in person. We thank all of you for that decision. Couldn't be more happy, because reaching our kids means we need to be there. So, just a couple of things, me, Mike, yeah, welcome.
Got my mask on, you can't hear anyway. A couple of things, we recently, two weeks ago, had our Right to Read Week, which is always a fun week to have, called Rockin' Reading Rocks. Just a couple pictures here. Our kids did like nightly reading minute slips, turned them in, and then winners were drawn to come to our, our backstage reading lounge. So they got to read with flashlights and, we had it all decorated with lights. So that was fun. I don't know. Our top class that read the most minutes got a Susie's Big Dipper Milkshake Party, and so they, they enjoyed that. Thank you, Susie Big Dipper, for sponsoring. Lots of fun with dress-up days and decorating our doors for all kinds of music theme and rock and reading themes. And we finished off our week by meeting our reading minutes and a virtual concert from Justin and Jared Younts of Reflection. So they played some fun songs for us, and we had a great week with Right to Read Week. So, just sharing that week. And then, talking a little bit about our behavior coaches that we have this year, Mrs. Troglin is, sorry she could not be here tonight, she is at a funeral for her father-in-law today. So, but really kind of her vision on what she saw happening with really improving the social emotional learning. So our, our coaches are Mrs. Marty Moore and Mr. Shane Minnick, and they have led this whole thing. So I'm, got a next, a little video, just of kind of a, a day in the life of how we do the calm room and work on social emotional skills, so. The main goal is teaching those calming skills so they can stay in the classroom. We don't like suspensions, we don't like removals, it's not teaching them what they need to know. So, teaching those skills is, is a main goal that we have for keeping the kids in the classroom to learn.
Look. If you want to jump, you have to jump. If you want to jump, you have to jump now. If you want to jump, you have to jump. Then you have a seat. That's why you want to jump.
So just to kind of go, I know that went really fast and a couple of things, but just to highlight a few things about social emotional learning, and what we're really trying to do is teach those kids, the calm room is a place they can come in to have scheduled breaks, to learn skills or learn so, either dealing with their emotions, identifying their emotions and strategies to help get them back on track, or social skills with other students. Last year, we were able to have a calm start morning with some of our kids and eat breakfast together and set their goal for the day, make sure their homework was ready. And a lot of times, they get off the bus more stressed and anxious to calm them down before the classroom. This year, with the breakfast and stuff, couldn't, but it's something we hope to bring back again. They practice saying that every time they walk in the room, just learning to calm their body down by taking deep breaths and reminding themselves, we got this. So learning to open up different spaces. They also always work on a reflection sheet. What are their goals for the day? How do they have to behave in certain classes? And then reflect on where they made good choices or bad choices, and teaching them how to improve them. A lot of the kids really love the drawing, so after they, they decompress, they get some time to just draw or play with a game or something. We did create a virtual classroom when everything went virtual last spring, so that all our tools and strategies are also available online for our students and for our teachers. A lot of our teachers need that calm-down strategy, you know? Sometimes too, because you get flustered and things start moving too fast, so it helps us reflect and slow down. Another thing that we really implemented that Ms. Troglin really worked on, and also Mrs. Moore a great deal, is something called peaceful playgrounds. And so, it's a time where our, our recess was divided into zones, and, and part of that did stem from the need to, the contact tracing that came with COVID. But the benefits have so outweighed that the same teacher is, knows the kids from their class and another, so you don't have other people they might not know at recess, you know their behaviors. They get to play in all areas and choose different equipment, because we rotate every different day. The gym teacher, Mrs. Peoples, instructs them on new games, new equipment to play with. We have a lot of fun things that we kind of rotate it out. So you find out that the kids that used to walk around the playground, not knowing what to do, and then eventually finding other kids to bug and get in trouble because they didn't know what to do, they now have an area, they now have resources, they now know the games to play and who to play with. So we're finding them much more actively engaged. And the teachers are getting to know them better too, because it's a less structured time. You get time to talk, you're out there jump roping with them, you know, or hula-hooping. So, it has been so good for so many ways. Part of that peaceful playground is also teaching the kids to problem-solve for themselves. You know, they might first have to go to think about it. What was the problem? Let's sit down there and think what the problem was. You know, or why we're upset or angry, and then what can we do to solve it? And if the teacher sees a kid go sit there, then they know, maybe they need me to help intervene, or maybe they're able to solve it themselves. So teaching that peer-to-peer problem-solving is huge. Just some of the things, we keep data with our behavioral specialist team on all the things they do on a given day, and they're really, their job is threefold. To try and get the classroom teachers to be able to implement things in their classroom to make things more peaceful, calm, and deal with it, to work with some kids in small groups that might be having difficulties or problems getting along, and then also to work on that one-on-one level with kids that need more intervention. So, they're busy all day long. So, any questions? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a great presentation, and I think it's important to add, social emotional health of our students is not a new concept, but especially now, in, in lacking that socialization and many times, and as our kids return, we're starting to see some elevated needs. And it's not just Pickwa, it's across the country with, with this. And I know we have a lot of people that play important roles in this. I mean, you have your behavior coaches, your teachers, your principals. Amy Todd organizes monthly meetings with the behavior coaching team with Lisa Combs. I mean, there have been so many pieces, but the bottom line is, we can't get the education if the kids aren't there and able to get what we have to offer. So, I think it's going definitely in the right direction with the approach that they're taking, so thank you. Summer school update, not really summer school anymore, but we do have to have a plan in place to help close gaps for the kids, especially given what we experienced through COVID-19 and, and gaps, natural gaps that kids will have. So, we're going to hear from Amy and Teresa, and I think Scott's back there, so if you guys want to give us a quick update on, on what that's going to look like for us this summer.
So we have been engaging our teachers in conversations about what, what they would like to see for our summer learning programs, and have had lots of conversations about what we think will be most effective. Let me start by saying, many of these plans are still contingent, because we're still working on, we don't know numbers yet, because we haven't done the letters home to parents to get commitments on who's coming, so some things will still fluctuate once we know exactly how many students are going to participate. We are also working on transportation, because we'd really like to be able to provide transportation this year, because we feel like that's a key factor in making sure that everybody has equal opportunity to participate. So, some of these things may change just a little bit depending upon those, those two factors, but in general, this is what we are planning. We're focusing on small group tutoring types of sessions, because we found in the past and more recently, there's been a lot of things written about the fact that small group tutoring sessions are more effective than trying to do like a whole classroom kind of setting. So that's the premises that we're working off of. In our primary schools, we're going to be working on small group tutoring sessions in both reading and math, and a... But their third rotation, they're going to do some themes, and they're going to have theme-based topics where they integrate reading and math into them. They're going to do things like coding crusaders, weather warriors, cooking creators, readers theaters, sports enthusiasts. So they've got a whole bunch of other themes created, and so that'll give kids an opportunity to focus on their reading and math skills, but also pull in a lot of other topics that can integrate the skills, but give them some fun opportunities to learn and interact with each other. So that's the goal of the elementary summer school. Teachers are making recommendations of students that they would like to attend. Many of them spoke to parents at parent-teacher conferences in February and made some recommendations there. However, the information will be shared with all families because we want to make sure that anybody who wants their student or their children to participate have that opportunity to be involved in that. So that's where we are this evening. Later in the agenda, I believe there is an item on there about approving teachers on an as-needed basis. We have a great list of teachers who have already expressed interest in working with students this summer. And if we find that our numbers of students exceed the number of teachers that we have, we'll continue to recruit and find more teachers to make sure that we can meet the needs of all the students and families this summer.
So junior high, high school, a little bit different. So we'll start with the junior high. We talked about when to get the kids engaged in that summer learning process and really felt that August was the time to do it, almost as a jumpstart primer to the year, so that, you know, work that we did in June wasn't sort of washed away by the time they got back to school. So the junior high will start offering the summer learning program and it'll, four weeks of it, starting August 2nd through the 26th. We'll do four days a week, about two hours a day. We will provide math, language, arts, really just the bridge for the kids who maybe were on remote learning and were a little behind, or students who felt like the past year and a half has been a little disconnected for them, so that we can get them back ready to go as soon as they come back to school in September. The counselors there will make outreach to families of the kids that were of concern perhaps with remote learning. But again, just like elementary, it will be open to all students to partake. High school usually focuses on credit recovery in the summer, so we will continue to have that opportunity through our Odysseyware program. Students will be able to work through Odysseyware to make up credits that they maybe missed, maybe needed to redo. They'll have the entire summer to work on that, anywhere from math to science to language arts. They can do all of those things. We will also offer in June a three-week in-person summer learning session for high school students who need either credit recovery or want to get a jumpstart on the year. In fact, we'll do it as a credit flex, which means that any work that they do in the summer can be applied to what they start when the year begins, so that they can get a head start on the courses that they'll work on. We plan to offer that in algebra and geometry for the kids, and then ELA 9, 10, and 11, so that we're able to get them started as well. Much like Teresa said, this is predicated on the numbers of students, how many teachers we will need. And we'll have that list for you for the next board meeting. We're still working on this as we go here, ironing all these details out. So right now, I'm thinking we maybe need four to six at the junior high side, maybe a little bit less at the high school side. It just depends on the number of students that we get. So I'm excited. I think it's a good way for us to approach this and get kids ready to come back into the year rather than just do it in isolation, which is what we're trying to avoid. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Todd. I'm the Director of Special Education for Pickle City Schools. And much like what they just shared, those programs, everything that they shared is open to every child in the district. We have had approximately 36 students that have been identified with disabilities in grades kindergarten through sixth that either were remote or continue to be remote. Those students have, because they've been identified as children with disabilities, they have individualized education programs. With that individualized education program, or IEP, sometimes they have some very specific needs. They have been receiving that intervention remotely from intervention specialists. But what we would like to do is, as the state of the pandemic changes, our thoughts were, if we can push it into August and the first four weeks of August, Monday through Thursday, they would have come for a 90-minute session that would include literacy, mathematics, and social emotional learning. And those will be directly from intervention specialists. Those are specific for those kiddos that are identified with disabilities that have been remote or were, or still remote at this point. And then as space allows, we may also, through some data collection and teacher recommendation, invite some other students that have been identified with disabilities to be part of that. But those will be, as Teresa mentioned, small group. These will be very small group. And so we will make calls to those families specifically about those. And again, that need for special transportation is there, so we need to make sure that we have that arranged for families, whether that's from a daycare provider this summer. If the parents aren't able to get them here, we want to just make sure that there are no barriers and that we can get them back into our building as a primer for them to re-enter our schools that they have not been in for a year. Thank you.
Thank you. And this team has spent a lot of time brainstorming with, and Mindy Gerhardt included in that, brainstorming with principals, trying to figure out, you know, what the best opportunity for our kids will be. You can hear that it's not traditional summer school. The way I would describe this is very focused, so the individual needs of the kids are going to be met through this process. So I would encourage all of our parents, once they start seeing that information come out, to take advantage of this because like Teresa said, we have teachers that are willing to do this and ready to go, and it's an opportunity to really do some great catch-up for our kids. So thank you, guys. Business Advisory Council update. Thank you all. Business Advisory Council update. You were made aware by Mr. Thompson that we received the three-star, our Advisory Council received the three-star award, which is phenomenal considering that there are only 10 school districts, I believe, who had councils in the state of Ohio that received that level, and then only two that received the highest, which is the four-star. So I know Clint's got some details about that he wants to share quickly with you as well. So congratulations to the Business Advisory Council. I think I just shared most of those things.
Yeah, I think you got it.
Again, we've got, we've got great people from the business community, along with our, many of our educators who work together at these meetings, board members that make this all happen. If I try to name everybody who's engaged in that, I certainly would miss someone. So thank you to our Business Advisory Council. It's a great group to work with, and certainly they help us help focus our intentions in getting our kids out there and getting them opportunities to be successful in the workplace. So congratulations there. And I think that's, that's it for Superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, you want me to go ahead with this real quick? I am the board member that's on the advisory, you know, Business Advisory Council. And it's really, it is, it's a wonderful group of people. They're extremely supportive. They do what they can to really promote Pickle Schools, and thank you to them. It's awesome. But we have usually about three meetings a year, and we had one about a month ago. And just very quickly, some things that are going on at the high school. Pickle High School Digital Arts Program is going to make some videos for, of some of the local businesses. And, you know, they want to try to get that started and get some things going with that. And that will hopefully attract students at school that can play the videos, and some of the seniors, juniors can see that, maybe possibly work for that. And the businesses can see some of the needs of the students. Another thing, they're starting a discussion of the pre-apprentice and apprentice pathway to manufacturing programs to try to create a bridge for some of our students. And I know Scott is heavily involved with this, the ACT Work Keys Job Profiling. And I couldn't do it justice. Scott knows that well, but it's preparing the students and getting grants and things like that. He's done a wonderful job doing that. And the Career Advancement Center from Upper Valley is also very active, linked with that. So a lot of good things going on, really, to help prepare those students.
Thank you.
And I guess we are back to you here on Superintendent's Agenda, correct?
Yes, sir. Recommend board approval of the attached list of grants and donations, and you have that, and I'll quickly go through to recognize those folks. Matt and Tracy Detwiler to PHS Athletic Department in memory of Randy Haynes. Paul and Rosemary Gutman to PHS Athletic Department in memory of Randy Haynes. Bill and Sheri Atkins to the PHS Tennis Department. Pickla Quonis Club to the Key Club. Jackson Tube to PCIS Sixth Grade Olympics. Miami Valley Steel to PCIS Sixth Grade Olympics. The French Oil Foundation to PCS Regional Science Olympiad. And Jack Shaw to PHS Track. Niels and Ruth Lungard Charitable Trust to PHS Stage Curtain. And again, many of these are grants or trusts, but some of these folks are just individuals who want to help and donate money for individual programs. So I think it's important to always recognize them and their contributions. So thank you for that. Recommend board approval for Spring Creek Primary and Washington Primary Schools to administer the third grade state assessments for 2021-2022 school year using the paper option in accordance with Higher Vice Code Administration and Grading Assessments. There was an option there. Our administrators worked with our staff, curriculum department, to make a determination ultimately to use the paper pencil option, which would be best for our students.
And we have to do the testing, right?
Correct. We have to do the testing. There's not an option to not be tested. Three, recommend board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory of Pickle City School District. And you see a lengthy list there that they've gone through and found to not have value for us anymore. So I appreciate the vote on that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we need a mo-
I just wanted to say something about the Lungard Foundation with the grants. It just popped in my head because they have been a supporter of the school district for many, many years. And their most recent endeavor has been to help update and improve the auditorium at Pickle High School. And so they have paid for a new stage floor to helping to put in handicapped seating. And so now they're assisting in replacing the curtains on the stage. So I just wanted to thank them again because they are, they're definitely helping to make those improvements in the auditorium, and it's turning out really nice.
It's beautiful, isn't it? It really is nice. Okay, well, we need a motion.
No move.
Second, okay. Any discussion, questions, anybody? Okay, Mr. Hiddle, roll call, I guess.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Ford. Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Okay. Measure passes. And Mr. Lyons, we're back to you with Personnel Agenda.
Thank you. I just want to point out a few resignations and retirements, recognized people. Stephanie Friend won't be back with us next year. We're going to miss her. She's done a great job, and she swears that she's going to come back and sub for us. So we're excited to look forward to that. And then, of course, Steve Grasso as the CBI teacher at Pickle High School. And then a couple of retirements, Ellie Snap, I look around the room and everybody's thinking, how can we keep her another year? We've already had that discussion with her, but she's had an amazing career. You all got to see her resignation letter. Just a special, special person. And likewise with April Vossler, the work that she does with our littles over there at Washington Primary and in the library. So more to come on our retirements. We'll spend a lot more time on that as we get to close out the year, but special people, and they will be missed. So outside of that, for the Personnel Agenda, we have some FMLAs and some of our traditional things with supplementals and long-term subs. So if you have any questions, I'll take those.
Okay. Well, motions to pass the, to vote on the Personnel Agenda.
No move.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving the Personnel Agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, measure passes. Hearing on the, from the public, we don't have anybody here, so. Okay, old business, Mr. Lyons.
Old business. Those are recommend board approval of the second read of the final, and final approval of the NEOL board policies, and those are updates. Again, you've heard that from Mr. Thompson in the, at the past meeting as well. So this will make those policies active. And I can read them all to you, each one.
That's okay.
Or we can all assume that you've had a chance to look at them, so.
It does save, it does save a lot of you to throw them.
They're significant.
They are, they are. But it's good to upgrade.
And again, most, those are all updates, so. Questions on that?
Anybody? Okay. Well, need a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of recommending the board approval of the final reading of the NEOL policy changes? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, measure passes. Okay, on to new business.
Mr. Hiddle?
All right. So first item on there is, we went back out to rebid for the windows at Pickle Junior High, and we received two bids on the second go-around. It was the two low bidders that were $40 apart the first time, and the winner ended up being Hem's Glass in an amount of $341,538. Any questions about that? We need to do that one.
How far apart were they this time?
I think it was about like $1,800. So they were a little bit further apart this, the second time around.
Okay. Well, entertain a motion to approve the contract for window replacement at Junior High. Motion, please? Okay, Kelly, motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay, and then we'll be back to Mr. Hiddle for point two.
Second. On there is to do the masonry repair work and the restoration of Pickle High School Stadium. We're awarding that to Sederlin Building Company in the amount of $83,500. Again, those bids came back and they were lower than the first time around. There were some discrepancies in the way that that was bid out, and so we cleared those up and got a better final result. Any questions about that?
Okay. Motion to approve the contract for masonry repair, restoration at the Pickle High School Stadium for Sederlin Building Company. Yeah? Okay. Second? All right. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Well, yes.
In new business.
In new business, yes. The other thing we'd like to do is, and of course, this will kind of be contingent on Dwayne being here, but we could go ahead and take a look and tentatively get something going. We'd, we've kind of got a couple of requests here. We'd like to adjust the dates if we can-
Again, you've heard that from Mr. Thompson in the, at the past meeting as well. So this will make those, those policies active. And I can read them all to you, each one.
That's okay.
Or we can all assume that you've had a chance to look at them, so.
Yep. It does take a while to get through them.
They're significant.
They are, they are. But it's good to upgrade.
And again, most, those are all updates, so. Questions on that?
Anybody? Okay. Well, need a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of recommending the board approval of the final reading of the NEOL policy changes? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side? Okay, measure passes. Okay, on to new business.
Mr. Hiddle?
All right. So the first item on there is we went back out to rebid for the windows at Pickle Junior High, and we received two bids on the second go-around. It was the two low bidders that were $40 apart the first time, and the winner ended up being Hem's Glass in an amount of $341,538. Any questions about that? We need to do that one.
How far apart were they just done?
I think it was about like $1,800. So they were a little bit further apart this, the second time around. Yeah. That's fine. We're not going to worry the detail.
Okay. Well, entertain a motion to approve the contract for window replacement at Junior High. Motion, please? Okay, Kelly, motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay, and then we'll be back to Mr. Hiddle for Point Two.
Second, on there is to do the masonry repair work and the restoration at Pickle High School Stadium. We're awarding that to Sederlin Building Company in the amount of $83,500. Again, those bids came back and they were lower than the first time around. There were some discrepancies in the way that that was bid out, and so we cleared those up and got a better final result. Any questions about that?
Okay. Motion to approve the contract for masonry repair restoration at the Pickle High School Stadium for Sederlin Building Company. Yeah, okay. Second. Okay. All right. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Want to do the dates?
Well, yes.
In new business.
In new business, yes. The other thing we'd like to do is, and of course, this will kind of be contingent on Dwayne being here, but we could go ahead and take a look and tentatively get something going. We'd, we've kind of got a couple of requests here. We'd like to adjust the dates, if we can, for the May, June, and July board meetings.
We've already changed July once. We can change it again?
Well, we might. We'll see what we get. Let's see if it works. So let's go to May here.
Okay, May, we're scheduled for the 27th. Would it be possible to move it to the 26th? Reason being, that's the Career Center complication. I have a grandson graduating that night, and I'd be in deep trouble if I were at a board meeting.
Wednesday, the 26th?
Yeah.
We have class night that night.
Okay.
So that's going to be a challenge.
How about the, how about the Tuesday?
Tuesday? We have, it's a rain date for Top 100, but I don't think that, I mean, I don't know what's in there.
How about the Thursday before? Is that better?
That would work.
That would be better for me.
The 20th?
20th?
Yeah.
I don't see anything, do you?
Do we do, do we graduate at that meeting?
Well, if we do-
We can do, we can do them at that meeting either, anyway, still.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, to no?
We can do it, we can do it at the grad, we can do it at graduation like we did in the past, too. We don't have to do it at that meeting, so.
So that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have been there last several years.
So do you want to, do you want to do that like you did last year? That was very nice.
Yes. That was good.
To approve, to approve the graduates there?
That first couple of minutes.
Then that takes care of that.
Yes.
Okay.
And that gives full time right there.
So you see any other conflict on the 20th, Jeremy?
I don't.
I can't see his calendar, but we'll just-
Yeah, we'll go May 20th.
Steve, you okay with that?
That's fine with me, but this, we're going to wait and check with Dwayne and Sean, or we're just going to ignore it?
Dwayne's calendar is open at that point, too.
See, okay.
Okay.
So we just don't, I mean, know about Sean.
So May 20th, 6 o'clock here, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Keeps me out of trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
And then June?
Yeah, let's take a look at June. What I was wondering, would that Tuesday or Wednesday before work?
21st, 22nd?
Uh, well, 22nd, 23rd.
Either one's fine here with me.
I know, we're good.
How about 22nd? Would that be okay? Tuesday, the 22nd? Okay. June 22nd, 6:00 PM here.
And you said July also.
Yes. Let's see, July is, I was wondering if we could move the July meeting to the 20th, Tuesday, the 20th.
Oh, it's early, isn't it? Okay, got it.
I'm usually gone the last week of July. I asked for that to be moved.
I am, too. Not that it matters, but I, so you want to go what date?
The 20th?
See, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Perfect.
July 20th at 6:00 PM at the board office. Okay.
I have one more request since we're doing calendars. That's actually my list. April 7th or 8th, can we do something? Again, that will be a very short meeting. It's to approve the renovations at Pickle Junior High, the phase one of the two phases at that building.
April 7th, Jeremy?
7th or 8th.
Either one.
Either one works.
What time?
And we could do whatever time is convenient, so it doesn't have to be-
7th is good for me if I fly out on the 8th.
Okay.
What time?
What time do I fly out?
No. What time, what time works for that meeting?
April.
Daytime, I mean, you want-
4, whatever.
Okay, April 7th, right?
We've done four in the past for those.
Do you want to do four, or is 4:30? I mean, Kelly, what do you think the time?
Four is fine.
4 o'clock? Okay. You're at the board, correct?
Want to approve all those dates?
Yeah.
Yes, might as well. Okay.[1696.13]